I'll start the meeting, a real call please.
Commissioner Eastman?
Present.
Commissioner Ganger?
Here.
Commissioner Fowles?
Here.
Commissioner Welsh?
Here.
Here. Please stand if you will participate in opening prayer and pledge allegiance, please.
Heavenly Father, we ask for your blessing upon our meeting tonight, pray you'd give us wisdom, help us to make good decisions that are beneficial for all here in Arc City. We pray you'd give safety to those driving through our streets tonight. And Lord, I pray you'd protect all the first responders, police officers and firemen that have to work maybe a little extra during times like this. And Lord, we ask it all in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any addition or relations to the agenda?
Yeah, we want to remove item number one under old business until a later date till we can get the downtown business owners that are affected contacted. We haven't got in touch with all of them yet, so we'll just put that off for now.
Okay. I so move that we approve the agenda with the elimination of old business item number one until a later date.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved to second, any other discussion? If not, in all favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Then, uh, I guess we already approved the agenda. Is it?
What now? Yeah, you've, yeah, you've.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Okay, I guess number two, awards and proclamations. Guess the first one is the VFW Officer of the Year presentation to the ACPD Officer Wade Hammond. You guys want to step forward?
I want to thank you for having us here for this award. This is very important to the VFW. My name's Charlie Cravens, I'm the post commander of the VFW out here and third district commander, second term. The reason I have these jobs is hard fought battle, nobody else wanted them. Let's see, it's Michael Holland, most of you probably know him, if you don't, you know, I'll be in this area. He was past post commander and past VFW state commander last year and now is quarter master out here, thank goodness, I needed, I needed one. Usually I just read a little short thing about why we do this, the VFW does this, is to recognize the special officer. It used to be a national program, it's just a state program. Our officer didn't win the state, I was involved in picking that. But because of our experience this last week, we were burglarized Saturday night. And I seen the diligence of the officers of Arcane City, it's amazing. I was impressed. Master Police Officer Wade Hammond. Began his career with the Arcane City Police Department in 2015. In 2018, MPO Hammond was heavily involved in the department's community outreach events. The Arcane City Police Department has placed a high value on positively interacting with our community. MPO Hammond has been an important part of that by participating in popsicle patrol, bad October, and the filming of the department's lip sync challenge video which aired on the department's social media outlets in July. MPO Hammond volunteered to help out with the annual Golden State Foods bike build and assisted with the career day hosted by Cali First. MPO Hammond can always be counted on to step up and accept any challenge. He took it upon himself to conduct campus visits at the Cali College. His presence in the school helps create an atmosphere of safety and security. Most notably, MPO Hammond has distinguished himself as in, as in the area of crime suppression and prevention. MPO Hammond has conducted a high number of drug related search warrant which has been in reducing the amount of drugs on our city streets. He was placed into a community policing detail and paired with a detective with focus being high pri- being high primary. MPO Hammond has excelled in this position to the point of being recently assigned to the Cali County Drug Task Force. MPO Hammond takes every opportunity to educate the public about ways to protect themselves from crimes. He assisted a shift, he assisted a shift that went door to door to distribute liter- literature and educate citizens about a developing crime problem and a part, and a part of the unaffected by, uh, property crime. MPO Hammond has emerged as the department's leading recruiter. His energy and positive attitude toward policing and the department sets him apart. In November 2018, MPO Hammond was promoted to the rank of Master Police Officer. For all of Master Police Officer Wade Hammond's accomplishments and outstanding work in 2018, he is nominated by the Arcane City Police Department for the VFW Officer of the Year. I love trouble reading that, I'd rate Nuke or Dark City. So we would like to present this award to Master Police Officer Hammond.
You got a speech prepared?
Speech?
Thank you for your hierarchy. Make citizens for, uh, believe in our police department, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're gonna have to get a filter on that picture, his face is so red, it may wash everyone else out.
I got things to do, thank you for getting here.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Drive careful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your service.
Be careful.
Be careful.
Okay, we've got a second, uh, proclamation, weather awareness week proclamation.
Well, that's good for today.
Yes.
That was kinda cool.
Yeah.
Really, we should do it all the time, of course, we ran a bar.
Whereas severe weather awareness week is offering to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for the under changing severe weather flooding in Kansas. And due to encourage all citizens to better prepare, prepare their homes, businesses and communities for the upcoming storms and flood seasons. And whereas the Kansas Hazard Protection Plan identifies several weather and flooding as some of the costliest types of natural disasters in Kansas in terms of lives lost, injury, injuries and property damage. Whereas severe thunderstorm, tornadoes and flood threatens people's homes and other property in every county in Kansas. Whereas several thunderstorms, tornadoes and floods can happen anytime, anywhere without warning. And whereas the flood damage is not normally covered under standard homeowner's insurance policy. And whereas the state of Kansas is in connection with the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, National Weather Service is observing severe weather awareness week on March fourth through the eighth. Now therefore I J Warren, Mayor of the City of Arcane City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim and recognize March the fourth through the eighth, 2019, as severe weather awareness week. And the city of Arcane City urges all citizens to recognize this observance with appropriate readiness and preparedness action. I further call upon and urge all citizens to consider becoming more educated about severe weather threats by attending one of the annual sessions of the Storm Fury on the Plains that will be offered this year at two thirty PM, six thirty PM, February the twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, at the Cali Center, uh, eighth theater.
Thank you, Robert.
Severe weather awareness week is, uh, March fourth to the eighth. On the fifth will be the statewide tornado drill and the sirens and stuff will be tested at ten o'clock in the morning on that date. If the weather's not cooperative that day, then it'll be pushed off to third through the seventh. Uh, last year, Cali County had nine tornadoes.
Over what night?
Twenty eighteen. We had two real close to Arc City last year.
One really, really close to Chief and I.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay. Thanks Bob. Bob, are you in, do you have anything to do with the storm fury on the plains?
No, I don't.
We have to.
The Weather Service does that.
Do we have to call in and say we're gonna be there?
No, no, no.
Okay.
It's free and open to the public.
All right.
You don't have to have reservations or anything.
Okay, just checking.
So I'm hoping in a future year we'll, we'll do it in Arc City sometime again, I've had a lot of people request.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you. Thanks Bob.
Thank you.
Recognition of visitors, I guess we don't have any. Is there any comments from the audience? If not, go on to consent agenda. I so move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Agreed.
Okay, it's been moved to second, any discussion on it?
Well, I'll say, I just am not gonna vote in favor of expanding the equal opportunity and accessibility board. When I was mayor, I didn't want to expand it, we already have a working board, but, uh, that's all I wanna say.
Okay. If not, it's a voice vote, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, uh, there's no old business, new business?
Mayor, why consider first reading of an ordinance pledging the general purposes proposed for the future use of revenue to be received from a certain sales tax?
What this ordinance does is actually pledges ninety-five percent of the existing sales tax revenue to, uh, pay future bond payments. Uh, this is a requirement that's, we need to undertake as a commission in order to assure the bondholders and bond buyers that revenues will be made available to pay back those pledges.
I move we adopt the first reading of the ordinance pledging the general purpose propos- purposes proposed for the future use of revenue to be received from a certain sales tax and as written pledging the, pledging those revenues to pay back bonds.
I'll second that. So, yeah, more discussion on it?
It's not only that, it's what we, what we told everybody, that's what the purpose was. And now, when we passed the resolution saying this is what we're gonna, or not a resolution, like a.
And like a resolution.
Resolution of intent, now we're actually gonna pass the resolution now that the sales tax is.
Yeah, ordinance is binding.
An ordinance is binding, yeah, before it was a re- resolution, so.
Okay. There's no other discussion, it's a real call vote.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ganger?
Yes.
Commissioner Yucovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Welsh?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Number two.
Consider first reading of an ordinance fixing the compensation of a worker in the city and repealing ordinance number two thousand and eighteen dash twelve dash four four seven six.
Mister Mayor and Commissioners, this is just a small change in job titles to better suit job descriptions. We did have distribution and collection maintenance worker three. We were gonna have two of those, that was approved back to become effective on December twenty-second. And working with the supervisors, they have helped me determine that two separate and distinct positions are more ideal than putting them into one, under one job description. So they wanted to have a water distribution maintenance worker three and a wastewater collection maintenance worker three. So all this is really doing is eliminating that one job title and creating two new job titles, but it's not creating any new positions.
Are those positions filled already?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Are those in the same step?
Yes, it didn't change on the pay.
Okay.
At all.
So it's just that one worker only works in distribution and one only works in the wastewater.
Correct.
And they can have two different licenses on the water side, you have the water license and on the wastewater side, you have your wastewater certifications to the state. So when you get to the level three, we want to make sure that we have the highest classification for both of those positions.
Some differing equipment operation, the certifications is the primary difference.
How did we do it before, and I mean?
Well, it's combined altogether, um, we just had maintenance workers previously.
We had leads.
And leads, and, and the leads, uh, they still focused on their individual positions, uh, but they, it wasn't as a standard or written procedure to have it focused as, as it is now.
As it is now, that's right, we've really separated them off with the job title, with the updated job descriptions, um, certifications, equipment operation.
I so move that we, uh, adopt ordinance fixing the compensation of employees of the city of Arcane City, Kansas, pursuant to the provision of KSA fourteen dash fifteen oh one and repealing ordinance number twenty eighteen dash twelve dash forty-four seventy-six.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved to second, is there any more discussion on it?
Is this going to change or require the current employees to get more certification in order to hold their jobs?
They did have three years to obtain them, we're giving them a year or six months because they're almost there. One needs to get a Class A CDL and the other one needs to get the, the three in water distribution.
And what's, what's that entail?
A very difficult test. I haven't obviously not been through the testing, but I've heard it is quite rigorous and, um, but he has already done his one and his two, so he is ready for his three. And then the other one has his three, he just needs to get his Class A CDL. He already has a Class B.
So what we're really doing is making the one that's in the wastewater not do the other test also and the other one, you know, vice versa.
Yeah.
Or is make sure they only have to focus on their own.
Correct, rather than have to take both tests.
So, and this doesn't give them any more pay to have these certifications?
Because we, we.
Said the pay won't change?
Yeah, we did that back in December, we increased the pay. So what we're doing now is just separating them so they don't have to have both licenses for each role.
And they were required to before, in December?
Under that description.
Uh, yeah, under that job description they were, um, but they did not have to have a Class A CDL.
And that was determined the Class A CDL because of the equipment and the, and the weight of the vehicles that they have to be able to drive with the trailers.
So, were they given an option at changing this, or is this something that was done above them?
No, this was done from them, uh, it was really done, um.
They decided?
It was done, well, it was done with, um, Anthony Butt, Rod Filo, and we discussed it with them and showed them what we were thinking about. And so they're very well aware of, um, what was taking place and the reasoning behind what the, the why, um, that we're going to this and.
And if they don't pass, do they lose their jobs?
No, we'll work with them. We'll work with them.
Do everything, and that's, uh, one of the correspondence that I've provided to them is, is let us know if there's anything that we may do to assist you in obtaining these certifications. We're certainly here and willing to assist.
Yeah, the individuals we have in the position, there's, we want to make sure they pass it. I don't think they're gonna have any difficulty.
I don't think they will even. But it did give them a step up in December when, when we initially went to distribution and collection maintenance worker three. All this is doing is just splitting it off into the two veins of water distribution and wastewater collection.
If they don't, say if one of them doesn't pass it, do they have, they have six months where they do it again? I mean, what's the time's deal, if they have to retake the test or whatever?
I would have to defer to Nick or to Mike.
Well, it depends, if they're within a point or two of the test, we'll just let, let them retake it. If they've been showing that they've been working hard towards, on the wa- on the water side. The Class A CDL should be easy, should be fairly easy to, to get that. The water license, just based on his performance and the, the past experience of these individuals, I don't think that's gonna be a big issue, I really don't.
Where they take this test at?
It's a state test, correct?
Yeah, there's the, there are two different types.
They have to go to, go to Peaker or Wichita or where they go.
They go to different, yeah, my.
I don't know.
You don't know, I don't know specifically where they go to take the test, but I know that there are different locations throughout the state at different times.
I mean, regardless to be level three, that's what's required.
It's, yeah, it's right under the supervisor.
Yeah. And, uh, it just makes it so that, anyway, I think.
We were trying to give them opportunities for building.
Yeah, opportunity to get.
To build in the one, twos and threes, and also to give people the opportunity that maybe didn't want to have a Class B CDL, but just wanted to be a regular maintenance worker and didn't really aspire to promote, to give them positions too. So it, it's, it's promotional opportunities, but then an opportunity to be a regular maintenance worker if you want to be.
So this isn't required by the state, but it's offered by the state?
The testing?
Well, I mean, the whole process of carrying these different levels.
The state does require us to have, um, uh, Class Four in water and Class Four in wastewater.
And those are your supervisors.
Um, those are your supervisors, this position's Class Three, so it's a step below. So if they want to aspire to be, then they could take the class.
I mean, I understand the process, that's what I'm saying, is that it's, it's something we're doing, not something that's required of us to do.
Right.
Okay, is there any other questions? I guess it's a real call vote.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ganger?
No.
Commissioner Yucovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Welsh?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you. Number three.
Consider first reading of an ordinance modifying municipal code part two, chapter fourteen, concerning carbon monoxide alarms, contractor licensure and examination in the Building Trades Board, as well as chapter thirty-four, adopting by reference the two thousand and fifteen International Fire Code, amending that code and modifying municipal code to so reflect.
Good evening, Mister Mayor, City Commissioners. I want to apologize for my cold, first off, about that.
Come on, take notes, you have them.
Carbon monoxide detectors is, uh, something that's a far, uh, code really doesn't enforce and the state of Kansas doesn't. Uh, it's more up to municipalities to enforce it. And there's nothing right now that we have on carbon monoxide to do that. It's just a good safety issue in my point of view. I did get a copy, I'll give it to you all on the requirements on it, the locations of it and everything.
Oops.
This one right here would be like the multi-story, uh, residents. Smoke detectors are just required in the bedroom, but then the hallway by this bedroom, they have to have a combination or a smoke detector slash CO detector in there. And then anywhere that there's a fuel fire burning appliance, you need to have one. So right there's a hot water tank in the basement showing that, got one there, the carbon monoxide and smoke detector in there too. A single story right there, uh, you have the bedroom with the combination there. bedroom over here, combination there, because these, this is a joint hallway, so it has to have the protection of that hallway there. So far as cost wise, uh, it's very economical. You can pick them up with just a battery type that we would be enforcing for a lot of change of occupancy the way it reads now, uh, anywhere from twenty dollars up to you can spend sixty, seventy dollars if you want to. But the twenty dollar ones are the first alert and they're a good, uh, carbon monoxide. The combination ones will run you about ten dollars or more to do that. So far as the.
Do these have to be hardwired, Mike?
No, on these here, uh, on, let's see here. On the R three fifteen dash five, it explains on that that the, uh, carbon monoxide installed in accordance with this section is permitted to be battery powered. And what that is, is like on a remodel, the IRC, which is International Residential Code, that requ- uh, requires it on a remodel or a addition or deconstruction, they have to have them anyway if they have a, a, uh, car, a garage attached or a fuel burning appliance in there, they have to have that anyway. This, uh, goes into the effect where the, some of the houses that's in existence that don't have them, this would require them to be able to do it on change of occupancy only. In words like, say if the rental is changed with occupancy, then they should require, uh, require that. Those can be battery backup too, battery power tools. Again, I'm apologizing from the, from, uh, course.
So this is only new construction and, and major remodels, over fifty percent, correct?
On the remodel and new construction, that's in the IRC, that has to be done anyway, that's in code. This would be on change of occupancies, uh.
When you, when you say change of occupancy.
Okay, change of occupancy is to where like if a house is sold, the renters will let them know that this has to be brought to the, the homeowners or the old homeowners attention that that needs to be put in. Rentals the same way, if there's a change of occupancy, that would be, be more relying on to the landlords, you know, we would ask them to keep us up on that.
But we wouldn't inspect it during a change of occupancy or if the house is sold or anything like that. I mean, we'd, the only inspections we'll do on this item is new construction, correct? Yes, okay.
But why do we have the wording in there if we're not gonna do that?
Why do we have the, I'm sorry, uh.
The wording that says change of occupancy.
Change of occupancy, this, I'm sorry, I kind of, uh, to the sideline there. This part here does change to where change of occupancy, say if it's a, uh, residence is being sold and there's a old resident, they don't have smoke detection in there, they don't have carbon monoxide, uh, detection, that would require that, uh, for them to be able to sell the house that they would be able to, they would have to go ahead and put this equipment in to, for protection. The International Residential Code is already in effect, we adopted it last year. That is on deconstruction and remodel there, on that.
Right, I, I understand on new construction, but if, if, as the city manager said, we're not gonna go out and inspect, uh, a sale of a house or a change of rental property occupancy, then why do we have that wording in there?
Well, we wanted to.
And where is that wording to on this?
Okay, that is, please turn that back on.
Cause this isn't on, in the residential code, correct? It's on page fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Uh, I have page sixty-eight.
Fifty-five in, in here. Okay, I'll be, I'll get it to show you. So it's R three fifteen dash two point three?
Mm-hmm, installed upon any change of occupancy.
There isn't, in, in this section that you handed us, there is no three fifteen point two.
That's out of the International Residential Code. That's what that's at, and that's already been adopted. This one that we're promoting now is the wordage that, uh, Miss Al put in for the change on municipal code.
So we already have something on new construction and extensive remodeling, right?
Extensive, if it's fifty percent or more, then we don't enforce it.
But this is something you want to add to it where, where we're going to, uh, use the verbiage upon change of occupancy.
Right, and, and what that's for is, um, to be able to, uh, like, uh, we have to do a inspection if the gas has been off for over a year. We have to do a gas pressure test on that. That's one way where we can go in and see the inside of the house, check it out, same thing with electrical. And if they don't have them, then we can say, you know, before the new people move in, this should be done. And one thing about it, I mean, they can put in, uh, battery operated CO detectors and smoke detectors, which are a very reasonable price. It's not like they have to go in and rewire the whole house and spend a few thousand to do it with. It's not like they have to go in and rewire the whole house and spend a few thousand to do it with.
So, the reason you're wanting to pass this and and bring it before the commission is to really protect the new owners of the property or the new rental renters of the property?
The new owners. Yeah, this is to protect the new renters to whether if there is a carbon monoxide problem in the house, which you can't smell it, so you don't know, unless you have a uh, the fire department come in and check it, or you have a, a mechanical contractor with a sniffer and do it, you don't have any idea on it. It's protection for the public is what it is. For, for them to buy a house and move into a house.
And I, and I understand that. I I'm just saying that the number of people who live here right now who don't have those, you know, smoke detectors or don't have uh, the carbon monoxide detectors, I hate to use verbiage that's going to require them to do something that is a choice.
Yep.
It's safety and I understand that.
That, that's my point of view, it's a safety issue.
But, but also I see in the ordinance where it's also listing that we would be adopting the entire international fire code twenty fifteen edition.
Right.
Right.
Which we don't have a copy of here in front of us.
Yeah, right here.
It's probably quite a book for us to read today.
Yeah.
That's one of the smallest.
And there's just.
And which co-fire code are we operating under now?
We're operating in two thousand nine. Um, Winfield and Wellington, Winfield went to the two thousand fifteen, January of last year, and Wellington followed closely behind. There's not very many changes to it.
What would the changes be?
Well, I think you can see some of the strikeouts. I'll bring that, I'll bring that up. You know, mainly referenced different parts of the, the, the fire code, like section one oh five dash six dash three oh. In regards to open burning, it's now listed under section one oh five dash six dash three two, um.
What page is that in the packet? Then you need to, okay, you, we need to get where they can follow.
Sixty-four.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's go through this.
That's right.
So that the commissioners understand what's added, which is in green, sections that are removed are in red. So, can you go through each one of those changes?
Yeah. Well, what I'm looking, the very first green, which is why I'm addressing, the very first one is. Okay, so what page number am I on?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-three.
Number ten, international fire code twenty fifteen edition. That's what's, so the entire fire code we would be adopting.
Yeah.
And these are the changes.
We're on twenty thousand nine right now.
Yeah, two thousand nine.
That, that's been adopted by the city, so.
So, in this two thousand and fifteen code,
Yeah.
what are the changes?
Okay, section one oh five dash six dash three oh, you got the page number to land and fall?
Yes.
Sixty-three.
Okay. Regards to open burning is now listed under section one oh five dot six dot three two. Section one oh nine point three in regards to violation penalties is now under section one oh nine point four.
Did, did we have, chief, didn't, we have a thing where people could have open fires uh, in their?
We do, uh, yeah.
Patio things?
Patio things, yeah, we added that. What was it, chimneys?
Chimneys. Chimaes.
Three years ago.
Yeah, chimneys, yeah. But this says no person shall kindle or maintain any bonfire.
Yeah, I've seen it several years ago.
That's rubbish, and rubbish and trash, so.
Rubbish, okay. So, that's not an open flame?
The section we referenced names three oh seven point four point three and that's intact. We already accepted the chimneys.
Oh, it's, it's on the next page. It just scrolled down just a little bit, it's still there. Yeah, three oh seven point four point three.
Three oh seven.
Right there. Portable outdoor fireplaces. So, that's sections, some grammatical issues, it looks like.
Essentially, we had to re-adopt all the exceptions to the two thousand nine code because all the numbering changed. So, it's, it's restated in the ordinance, but it's all in current code as well.
Okay, also there's no section fourteen oh seven dot one, it is now section thirty-three oh seven dot one, which deals with the storage and handling of explosive materials. Article thirty-four is now section thirty-three oh five dot two, which deals with flam- flammable and combustible liquids. Article thirty-eight liquefied petroleum gas is referenced in chapter fifty-eight flammable gases.
So, what the commission has seen is the amendments to the two thousand fifteen international fire code.
From two thousand and nine, is that?
From two thousand nine, yeah, two thousand.
So, is that the most recent one, was two thousand and nine, and then they did a two thousand fifteen one?
They do it every three years. So, it's two thousand twelve, yeah.
So, there was a twelve in there.
Okay, that we didn't.
Yeah, we didn't, yeah.
We did about that.
There isn't anything crazy about residential sprinkler systems or anything, is there?
So, this is.
No, I, I, the, the one thing that I did go in, Chip is very good at this, he studies it quite a bit, but one thing I did notice is it does allow now for smoke alarms, having Bluetooth type smoke alarm.
Rather than being wired.
Assist, assist with the cost of, you know, not having them run for deconstruction.
You're talking about battery versus hard, uh, hardwired?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's not necessarily battery, it has to be like a Nest type of smoke detector where they're talking, where they can communicate.
Cause that's.
Well, no. They have, while, but now instead of running separate wire to have them talk, you can actually use a Bluetooth.
Cause it's the, the hardware for commercial, the, the, on new construction?
Hardware is for residential too, that's the state code.
So, are they required to go hardwire?
Yeah.
Yep. I was. They're required.
Yeah, but we, yeah. But I thought we just said it could be battery operated.
It, it can.
That's the CO.
On, on remodels.
That's illegal.
It's new construction and remodels.
Are you?
Yes.
They have to be hardwired, smoke detectors.
Well, the remodels, they don't have to be hardwired, they can be battery uh, wired, and they'll talk to each other, Bluetooth. Well, yeah.
Okay, let me.
Yeah.
But now if it's new construction, like a completely new house, that it will have to be hardwired with battery backup. And this is one of them right there.
Okay, so that's for new construction, is it required for remodel?
Uh, not the hardwires are required for remodel, the uh, remodel can be battery only with Bluetooth air connection. That, that way they're wireless and they can talk to each other and even get on your smartphone and head out and everything too. The IRC's really high.
I've seen that on TV.
The, the IRC is primarily for commercial occupancy. So, um, businesses, mercantile, um, residential, like um, Nell Sage, um, things like that, that's what the IRC is for. Um, the IRC, IRC, the residential code is for homes. So, they're two different books. The IRC, uh, for uh, fire spr- sprinkler systems and fire protection, it requires all that on different type of occupancies depending on the code. So, if a um, a new business is being built, it has to go by square footage, things of that, and in order for it to require uh, the fire protection systems. So, what they're talking about for the carbon monoxide is basically for residential, residential uh, homes, so.
On the Bluetooth um, monitors, like I said, I have the Nest smoke detectors in my house. And what's really neat about them is um, I can, I can test the alarms now, uh, but it alerts me every time that my smoke detector goes off, which if you had a hardwired in your house and you'd have connectivity, you would never know uh, whether your fire alarm's going off or not, or if it's smoke, whatever detects CO, I get an alert right on my phone. But what's kinda neat also is it gives me um, a history of last time that it checked the sensors, the alarm, last time it checked the voice, the battery check, wifi check, I mean, uh, also gives me a history on each one of my detectors and shows me if there's power outages, um, if it's operated okay, if the alarm actually sounded, it gives me an entire history of every time there's been any sort of alerts on that uh, smoke detector. They're pretty darn nice.
I had a, I have a question. Uh, did I hear you write that this is just for when uh, existing residential homes
Yes.
are, have a change in owner, say.
Change of occupancy.
Yeah, change of ox- occupancy, which would sometimes an owner and sometimes a rental.
Yes.
So, the uh, homeowner that lives in the house, that's lived there for thirty years, and they'll probably be there till they die, the city's not gonna do anything, not gonna go see them or tell them that they have to do this.
No, sir, we're not gonna go door to door and start checking.
But. But then, when a
New occupancy.
A renter or a landlord, that's what I'm trying to think of, re-rentes it, he's gonna have to go in and put in a thirty dollar det- uh, smoke, combination smoke detector in the hallway?
In the hallway and then in the bedrooms. And this, this is implemented anyway, the smoke detection set, uh, smoke detectors, that is, that's a state law. That is part of my state law.
Okay.
That's, that's already in effect by state.
Okay. So, we're not gonna, we're not forcing anybody other than the landlord to put those in once he, the renter goes out.
Right, other than uh, if a house is sold and a new occupancy, that's the only other, yeah.
Yeah. Only other time.
Yes.
Um.
On the average, you're looking at probably, um, well, on a two bedroom house, you're looking at two smoke detectors and probably one combo. So, you're looking at about three devices.
Yeah.
On the average, say forty.
And since the smoke detector is already required by state law,
Yes, sir.
the only thing that we would be doing is requiring the new, new uh, new construction and the landlords to put these in when they change, okay?
Well, the new construction is already passed.
It's passed, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Well, this is a first reading, I'm gonna move we make it first reading.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have a question?
All the draws that you're just, uh, are you tabling it?
I'm moving that we make it a first reading. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved second for a first reading. All pairs say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
That's a lot for us to look at.
It is.
And I appreciate the information, it's hard for us, before we're even here to ask questions though, it's so much weird, I don't even, you know, it's like.
Do we uh, need to have a little thing on the workstation on this?
No, there's not a lot there, I think just review it and if you have questions, um, bring them back. Just what it sounds like.
Can we have a copy of the revisions?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
So, from two thousand nine to two thousand fifteen, the only thing that changed in the book is the things in green.
I got a question.
I bought a, a CO detector. That plugs into a wall.
So, the only thing is we have exceptions.
But it's not, I don't think it's a combo, it's just a CO detector.
Yeah.
We're updating the exceptions to reference them properly.
Is, is that not, have, is that not, ho- uh, allowable?
The whole book.
It's allowable.
Well, this is what we pull out.
No, everything goes in.
Everything goes in, this is what it's put in.
The whole book, this is the only thing.
If you gotta plug into a load in twelve inches off.
I think it's a lot.
Not for work.
I expected it there.
We already have a whole book.
That's why the oneers.
Yeah, it's better have it in ceiling.
I have it in the ceiling.
Put the plug in.
I was gonna say, I just got a battery with any, stuck it up there.
Yeah.
Is there a way, and I just wanna, is there a way we could only do the carbon monoxide on rentals, that a landlord is required, but?
And new, new bills?
Not new, new, well, new it already is, new and landlords, but any, but if you just sell your house, then we don't even, we just, that's exempt.
Not new.
Not selling a house.
Yes, yes, whatever.
Yeah, we definitely can, it should, it'd just be a minor revision.
Cause when you buy a new home, I think you'd go, you should have a home inspection.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And that would, you'd find, you'd find out if the hot water heater or the furnace were leaking and then you should.
Tell you that it is reasonable.
And on, on all that stuff, on, on uh, houses when they go through the uh, realtors and stuff, uh, ninety-nine percent of all the inspectors will pick up on that, on the uh, smoke detection for sure. The only problem is with the carbon monoxide is not a state regulatory uh, system. You know, they can't inspect something that's not by code.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just, move on.
Do you wanna touch on the license portion of it too?
Yes, sir. Uh, on the licensing, uh, as you see, it's come, it's like a one-time licensing for people. And the reason for this, this is not a new licensing procedure for the city of Arkansas City, we had it before, back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. The building official at that time implemented this, and then it was taken out about three years ago.
And why, and why was that?
Why was it taken out?
Yeah.
I don't, you'd, you'd have to ask the building official before me.
Okay.
He had his reasons though. I don't, I don't have any ideas.
Eight sixty.
But what that's for is uh, if a contractor from our state is, that is fully competent and has a state license for that state, but his testing is not the same as what we require, as long as it's equivalent, we can give him a license to do it, cause we're having big jobs coming around. And if something that a contractor that is used to that size of a job, will be doing. And that's what, that's what we're coming up with.
The biggest, the biggest reason for these changes is because what we're finding is we just don't have enough tradespeople in Ark City um, to do a lot of these big projects. And so, we're having to bring in all these outside entities and honestly, we've been told that the cost for subcontractors is so much higher than anywhere else. This is really, opens it up a little bit more uh, to get more individuals and competition in the community,
Competition.
which is good then for the people that are trying to make improvements to their homes.
And, and the thing is too, even if you have another contractor out of state that doesn't have the same testing that we do, a lot of times they'll still use local subs. So, the city still gets some of the money for the local subs. And this is also uh, a concept of a contractor slash owner of a piece of property. You know, he's a contractor, but he's not local, and he doesn't have the testing, as long as he can show me documentation, and I can get it from the building official or the co-enforcement officer from his city or cities that he's gonna work for, and he can show me that he is competent to do the work, then you know, I, I could give him a license.
But we still require all the insurance and bonds as needed, and so.
They still pay the fee, they get their license.
They should have that.
It just provides additional avenues to become licensed rather than just taking the test. Which, and when we first adopted this, we grandfathered people in, we didn't require people to take the test either. So, it's, it's kind of the same thing. It recognizes that there are people that are qualified, and so if they're licensed somewhere else, licensed in another city, they do large projects all over the US, they can prove to us that, that they will build quality.
They've done equivalent testing, just not our test.
That's right.
And perfect examples like Wichita, they grandfather their tradesmen and so on and on. And we have them come down here and want to get a license to do it, and they're fully capable to do it. You know, but then ours uh, code says you can't, you gotta have the ICC test. This just opens it up and work to where that if a contractor comes in town, has a good sized job, that he's got a special sub, or if he wants to get the license, then we could, you know, give it to him. You know, and not hamper work for Arkansas City.
So, it's gonna be in this, this?
It's part of the, the amendments.
Part of this.
Do you want Tamara to look into that uh, on the, the uh?
Rentals?
Yeah, that's a simple fix.
Mm-hmm, yes, yes, that's easy. And, and what I'm probably going to do for the next agenda, I think we should separate these out.
Just rentals.
Because to me, the contractor licensing is, it's, that's a pretty easy issue, and it's, we have a time component there, there's some projects that want to get started.
It's easy.
So, um, unless the commission objects, when we bring it back, I'm going to separate this into two separate, one which is the contractor licensing, and then one with the fire code with the amendment regarding the rentals.
For next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Just make it easier to follow.
Okay. It is confusing, very confusing.
And this is a very long ordinance.
It's a lot, it's a lot of red and blue, green.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I thought something, have we had, had any reports of any carbon monoxide deaths?
Yes, sir.
No, we need to pass it, but then we read it in there.
Yeah.
No, we out have patients.
Patients?
Last year there was one on South C Street that uh, the fire department was called to, and I was called.
How many have we had of the patients, the, just one or two?
Just one at that, at that time.
Do you wanna know how many we had previously?
No. No.
Okay.
Do we know if it was a rental unit or homeowner?
Uh, it was a rental unit.
We had four, yes.
And a lot of times though, when somebody smells it or their alarm feel off, they kill the gas to whatever going in, carbon monoxide will dissipate fairly quick, and so a lot of times when they come in there and check for carbon monoxide, there's no evidence of it too, but that still doesn't mean that it's not a premium, that the equipment is not faulty.
Okay.
Alright, I think we got number three handled for next, next time, I guess, yeah, thank you. Number four?
Thank you.
Consider a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Smith and Oaks to provide engineering design, construction engineering, and construction services for the Arkansas River hike and bike trail, Phase Two project, an amount not to exceed two hundred twenty-five thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars.
As you're aware, uh, we were awarded the contract by KDOT, we were awarded eight hundred forty thousand ninety-one dollars, and to me it's primarily due to the effort Andrew Lawson put in the application, and also Smith and Oaks in preparing the cost estimate. The, uh, this is similar to the Crestwood Drive Bridge we're doing now, the construction is considered participating, KDOT pays ninety percent, we pay ten percent. Also, the construction engineering inspection, which we'd like to award to Smith and Oaks is also a ninety-ten, we'll pay ten percent.
Of, of that?
So we pay a hundred percent of the design fees.
Right.
We pay ten percent of the construction inspection.
Construction inspection.
Okay.
So the two twenty-five is all ours?
No, the two twenty-five is, uh, is not all ours, the ninety-four thousand on page seventy-three, the ninety-four thousand and seventeen dollars is all of ours, and we pay only ten percent of the hundred and thirty-one thousand.
And isn't this also the, that's the KDOT part, but aren't we also getting money from Westar?
We already have Westar's money.
And that's above, so we're spending above and beyond Westar's?
No, this is be taken out of Westar's money, this is just approving the contract, so we're using Westar's money to pay for this contract.
To pay for our ten percent?
Yes, well, the ninety-four thousand plus our ten percent.
Right, so then KDOT's doing the other part.
Yes.
So essentially.
So essentially it's not costing us anything, we just need to approve that.
Correct, it's not costing us anything, the.
Not causing the taxpayers, it costs someone something.
No, even if the construction will not, should not cost the taxpayers, but we have to pass the agreement.
Right, we have to still authorize the spending.
We, yeah, we still have to go through the proper procedures as we would with any, uh, major contract.
And we're fortunate that, that Smith and Oaks is certified, because if we would use someone from out of town, we'd have to pay per them and travel to them, like we're paying for, uh, Crestwood Drive Bridge.
Sure.
Why couldn't Smith and Oaks do that one?
They didn't have a certified inspector at the time.
Okay, they do, they have one now?
They do now.
Okay, alright, well.
Yeah, they have a former KDOT engineer, I believe, or KDOT inspector.
KDOT inspector, right.
Um, that, that is on, um, uh, with them now.
Well, I move, we authorize the city of Arkansas City to enter into a contract with Smith and Oaks Inc. to provide engineering, design, construction engineering, and construction inspection services for the Arkansas River hike and bike trail, Phase Two project for an amount not to exceed two hundred twenty-five thousand six hundred thirty-one.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second, is there any discussion on it?
I have a question, could any of that money be used for McFarland Pond Drive?
Yes. It could be.
Williams Way, we have extra.
We do have extra funds, we, we brought that up last week, or last being, we do have extra funds in there, we're going to, the first portion was fifty thousand.
Williams Way.
Um, tentatively fifty thousand, um, for the entrance signs.
Okay.
And, and then we had, I think, a little bit set aside for, um, potentially for, um, Christmas lights, and then we had, I think, about a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy-five left.
Right.
Left over from that too.
I just had the people say, why do we, hiking bikes, when we, that's another recreational opportunity, is the people going.
You know, every.
We had a, a bridge crossing and a CIP.
Yeah.
A few years back, and I don't remember what it cost.
Well, we could, we could put that back in.
I just.
Sixty thousand is what it was.
On Williams Way?
It's on Williams Way.
Yeah, sixty thousand for that.
Will that take care of the, uh, ADA requirements for people to fish?
You know, A.
It, are there ADA requirements?
It's not as rigid, um, for nature areas as it is for an actual boat dock, so if we were to put a boat dock in there, we have to make sure that it's ADA accessible from the parking stall to the boat dock, onto the boat dock, but if it's just an open area, I think all we have to have, have is an actual ADA approved parking stall, I believe.
So.
Yeah, but if we put a dock out there, if we put anything towards the water, then it has to be ADA.
I think so, people can carry their float, floats out there, or their two man.
All the way to that. Yeah, so.
Fast thing, whatever it is for that pond, without having to go through that.
We would put parking stalls, ADA parking stalls regardless of what we did out there.
Well, you'd have to shape, you'd have to shape the banks where you could get down to it.
If we don't make it.
Well, that would be just.
If it's not, then we don't have.
It's not a requirement for us to do that, put it that way, we wouldn't have to shape the banks to allow them, but if we wanted to put a boat dock and ramp down there, then that'd all have to be ADA approved, just like what we're doing now at, at Veterans.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. So.
So honestly, we could, we'll, we'll get that on the, we'll get that added on the CIP, cause we're doing that, uh, tomorrow for the CIP, we'll get that back on there with the funds being taken from there.
Get it, make it accessible?
I know it's not part of this resolution, I just thought I'd ask.
No, I think it's a great idea, cause we're in the process right now.
In conjunction with this though, I've had citizens ask me what about the other one?
You know, honestly, I did not think about it, I'm glad you brought it up, I, you know, we hadn't talked about it in a while, but I think it's, I think it'd be a perfect use for those, those funds, absolutely.
Keep that be, and stop making dams all across the river, huh?
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second, uh, you, you have a discussion on the, item number four, not, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, city matter or updates?
Uh, Chamber Coffee is gonna be at the Grinder Man, uh, ten AM Thursday, uh, this Thursday, so if you can be in attendance, that would be wonderful. I heard they're making something just absolutely wonderful for everybody. Maybe. Uh, next, uh, quarterly Cali County Service Alliance meeting will be five thirty PM Thursday in Cali County Courthouse. Uh, there's gonna be a special retirement reception for, uh, Captain Mark McCaslin, uh, next Thursday from one to three, he'll be here in the commission room. So if you can be here, that would be, um, absolutely wonderful, I think we'll have a, are we doing the presentation that day? Okay, we're gonna be doing a special presentation for, uh, Captain McCaslin that day, so if you could be here, uh, that would be wonderful.
What needs said on?
That's, uh, Thursday, February twenty-eighth.
Last day of the month.
One to three.
Okay, Dave.
It'll be, uh, in the chambers here. Cali County Job Fair is, uh, the twenty-eighth of, uh, February as well, from three to five in the right room. Uh, next commission study session will be Friday, March first in my office. And. Let's see, Rise Cali Health Coalition meetings, ten AM Tuesday, March fifth, uh, be at Stroller Field. Also in there, um, under section nine, item one A, is the asset forfeiture report, I didn't know if you haven't had a chance to review that, but that's actually a housekeeping item that we have to approve every year, correct, chief? You wanna give just a brief?
I read that.
Mayor Commissioners, uh, state law requires that every year I come before you and, and present a report on any asset forfeitures we conducted, and what those values were when they, they occurred, and also what we spent any of that money on. Uh, in compliance with state law, we have a special law enforcement trust fund, uh, that all that money is kept into, so we can track it separate, it's not in a general fund. Uh, in the report, uh, it lists all of the, uh, the cash deposits and, uh, four vehicles that we seized and sold in auction, and what we got for those vehicles when we sold them. Uh, bottom line is that we sold a to, we seized a total of seven thousand forty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents, and we expended two thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars and thirty-six cents, all of our expenditures were on legal fees and advertisements that was, uh, related to the seizures, we didn't spend any money on, on anything else other than just seizing those items, so we increased our special law enforcement trust fund by four thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-one cents, which is pretty average, over the years we've been seizing about, right around five thousand dollars a year.
So what's your total in there now?
Uh, at the end of twenty-sixth, uh, I'm sorry, end of twenty eighteen, we were at sixteen thousand one hundred ninety-seven.
Okay.
Um, I think we, we have, uh, a couple of forfeitures that are about four thousand dollars that are going in there, uh, pretty quick, so it's gonna go up a little bit more.
What's that eventually used for?
Well, what I really like, thank you for the question, sir, what I really wanna do this year is, you know, we're, we're short on some patrol vehicles, and we have two patrol vehicles that are assigned to school resource officers, you know, completely outfitted cars. Uh, what I'd like to do is pull one of those back as a spare car, so when we have broken down vehicles, we still have enough for everybody, and what I'd like to do is to buy a older, used, uh, sporty car like a Mustang or Camaro or something like that, and put a, a rap on it and say purchased by drug dealer's money, and, uh, outfit that and pay that to school. A lot, a lot of different, uh, school resource programs do that, their programs do that, and it's a, it's a good way to reach the kids and, and show them that, uh, drugs don't pay unless you're in law enforcement.
Thank you, Greg.
Maybe you could just confiscate something.
Well, yes, we, and that was kinda the idea, but, uh, the vehicles we are, we are confiscating are not really good vehicles, as you can see from the, the mountain.
From the value.
TV shows, they're fragile.
They're wore out.
Yes, they are. Any other questions for the reporter?
No. Access to report is ran.
Yeah, thank you, chief.
And that is all I have.
Move we adjourn?
Second.
We move to second, all favors say aye?
Aye.